Good evening and welcome to Monday, May 6th, 2024, City Council Meeting at 602, at six, excuse me, 111 East Maple Avenue in Independence, Missouri. So, please stand for the invocation by Tim Allison, Chaplain of the visiting nurse associations, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tim, please proceed.
Heavenly Father, help us tonight to remember that, at its very heart, leadership is servanthood. We pray that you would give wisdom and guidance, but most of all, give love and compassion. May we all have wisdom beyond our own and compassion and love beyond our own. Bless this gathering, bless all who are gathered here. Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Here.
Councilmember Perkins?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember McCandless?
Here.
Councilmember Wiley?
Here.
Councilmember Vought?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
If I could have just a moment of personal privilege, I'd like to introduce Kyle Walters from Troop 206. He's here working on his Communications Merit Badge. 206 is sponsored by St. Mark's United Methodist Church out in Siskiyouhina, and we just want to say welcome to Kyle and those that are with him, and thank you for coming tonight. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. And Kyle, I typically don't do this, but you're well on the path to Eagle. Is that correct? Very good. Next, we have Resolution 24-720, and if we could do this, if someone could please give me a motion in a second, and we'll approve this, and then we'll give it.
I'll make the motion for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for 24-720.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And this is the Resolution recognizing Chris Ballinger for the Community Development Program, the administrator of the Community Development Program, and this month's I-Star Award recipient. And here are just a couple of reasons why Chris is... Chris, do you prefer Chris or Christina?
Chris.
Chris, okay. They had that on here, but I just wanted to verify it. So, thank you. But her reasons for nomination, Chris got nominated because of her position, because there's been challenges in the past, and she jumped in with no grant experience at all. But she has proven to be excellent at reaching information, gathering information. Even though she may not know where it's at, she will find ways to find that information. She's improved the organization's response time, and she's also improved the communication with HUD. She became a vital part of the department, and they appreciate the amount of work that you've done, the task, and the trust that you've done in a very timely manner. So, well done, Chris. She has a great attitude towards her job, and she's very attentive and strives to get her work answers to the public quickly. Our public service organization and our HUD representative are well-served for that. And a specific example of her willingness to go above and beyond, recently, we went through two HUD monitrees and a state monitoring, and one was before her time in her position. HUD and the state were requesting information about a lot of past projects that she didn't have any knowledge about. She knew I was busy with other projects, and instead of contacting me with any questions, which I would have been fine with if she would have asked, but she researched and found the information that they were looking for through a wide array of files, paper files, past employee records and hard drives, all kinds of records you looked at. So, Chris, well done. It freed up the time of myself and the director, and she has proven to be a huge asset to our team. And for that, we are very proud to nominate you as an I-Star recipient. So, please come forward, if you would please, Chris, to receive your proclamation and the I-Star Award. Chris? I gave you the wrong proclamation. We've got another one.
Should we take a picture? Oh, she's teasing. Yeah, let's do it. Let's do it.
And if any of you felt like that was deja vu, it was. And Mark Shearer, you can stay there just for a second, but we're going to give you this proclamation that we have, and it's Historic Preservation Month. I know, Mark, you're very interested in that. You're a great fan of history. You're a great Truman scholar. Lots of information. We've had a number of conversations, and I'm impressed with your knowledge. So, both locally and nationally, throughout the month of May, recognize the significant role that preservation plays in our daily lives. And whereas 2024 is the theme celebrating our successes, to highlight the places saved since the preservation movement began in Independence. And whereas, the historic preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods and commercial districts, promoting sustainability, fostering civic pride, and maintaining character while enhancing livability. And whereas, historic preservation is essential for the heritage tourism of the 21st century. And whereas, the city's dedicated historic site volunteers and preservation advocates provide unwavering support for our cultural resources that we possess in the city. And whereas, the promotion and preservation of the city's historic buildings and sites is critical to the identity of Independence and who we are. And then, therefore, I, Mayor Roy Rowland, proclaim the month of May 2024 as National Historic Preservation Month. Mark, please come forward.
And is it okay if I tell him that he's been through double D-surgery at the exact same time, and only two months ago? I think he's doing great. He gives me hope, so thank you. I hope I didn't break the HIPAA rule there. I did, okay.
But I ask for permission, so that that saved me. All right. There we go. All right. That brings us to citizen requests, and I do need a motion. We have one non-resident.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion.
We've got a motion to suspend the rules?
To suspend the rules.
Thank you.
I second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Madam City Clerk, well, we can do this by proclamation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Therefore, our first speaker will be Tanya Huey. Tanya, please come forward, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Tanya Huey, and I am a lifelong resident of Independence, Missouri. I come wanting to address what I feel is a lack of enforcement of our laws on noise ordinances, and I feel a lack of interest in making new laws that fit our city today. Yesteryear laws do not fit today's city and today's people. I have an incident I recently experienced that will give you an insight as to why I question these laws. My dad recently passed away, leaving me to settle his estate and sell his home. Just so I can paint you an accurate picture of this incident, I need you to know I live one house up the street from dad's house. Our street on Sinclair Road is a dead-end street with very few houses on our block. On a Friday during a two-day open house, dad's neighbor decided to post a sign which read, "I have a very loud race car next door." The sign was placed in dad's yard, so I was free to take it down, which irritated the neighbor a lot. So, he proceeded to make another larger sign which read, "I have a very, very loud race car next door. I have lived here 20 years, and I am a nice neighbor. Will do anything to help someone. Please feel free to come talk to me." After our not-so-pleasant conversation about the signs during our open house, our nice neighbor decided to get the race car out and put on a show for any potential buyers by doing a burnout up our street, down our street, up Salisbury, down 24 Highway to Dickinson, down Dickinson to Salisbury, and then back to Sinclair, so everyone could hear just how loud an obnoxious, street nitrous-fueled race car can be and how far away it can be heard. Let's not forget what his sign read, "I am a nice neighbor." I do not believe he wanted to hurt the sale of dad's house. I honestly believe he wanted to give any potential buyer notice that he owned a nitrous-fueled street car. If you're wondering, yes, I do believe this did have an impact on potential buyers from the middle age to older age bracket. Now, you know the circumstance that brought me here. I believe for any person to do such a thing indicates confidence that our city is not going to enforce any noise ordinance laws. I know that they are not enforced, because I too have lived on this street for 30 years. My dad, living next door, made many complaints, which sparked a neighbor feud lasting till his death. As the elderly die and new neighbors move in, complaints are made in abundance about his noise. In fact, one neighbor was told by police that she was the nuisance. She made it a point to call each time our nice neighbor did a burnout down our street. He would run the race car long periods of times, drowning out dad's only enjoyment, his television, and keeps neighbors sleep-deprived running his race car during late hours. Hence, intentions were to irritate anyone who called the police. I am not trying to zero in on my neighbor, but only using him as one of many examples in our city. Our city is struggling, no questions about that. You want to build higher-end apartments to attract better businesses, to bring jobs and higher wages to our city, and doing so, you hope to curb crime and keep our middle-to-high-class citizens who pay taxes in our city. With this, you also bring citizens who license their cars on time, pay yearly taxes on time, and keep car insurance on their cars. We would attract people who would want to buy homes that will keep their homes and yards beautiful, which in turn will also bring back the much-needed beautification of our city. If you, Mr. Mayor, and council members wish to achieve such goals, we need to go back to the basics, shape up our city, most importantly. Most importantly, make our city worth living in. In conclusion, I think enforcing a noise-in ordinance law or nuisance ordinance laws is one of the many simple things that this city could do to help with the betterment of our city. I feel strongly the city refuses to enforce many of just basic Independence Missouri ordinances and laws. I feel basic laws that are lacking enforcement is what's hindering the efforts to improve our city. As a mayor and City Council member, in order to just bring this city to standards, I feel it should be at the standards that it once was. Think about making new laws that fit today's city and make plans to implement them. I truly believe if you can't do the basics, you can't do the extraordinary. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Thank you, Tanya. Next up is Jackie Summer, and Jackie, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rowland, council members. Jackie Summer, 3010 South Bradford Lane. I'm here as Chair of the Charter Review Commission. Just a couple of things I want to talk about. First of all, I want to start by saying I'm not here to ask you, the council, to change any of the decisions or votes that you've made to modify the Charter Review Commission's recommendations. But I am here to give some background on the Charter Commission's recommendations to remove most of the departments from the charter. And we did that with the belief that the departments would be codified in the city's Code of Ordinances or other policies and procedures. But in particular, I want to speak to the police and fire departments. The Charter Commission did not recommend amendments to remove those departments in order to get rid of them. We recognized how fundamental and vital it is for the Independence to have these public safety providers. The amendments were intended to make the current charter more concise and frankly to shorten it from its unwieldy 60 pages. Certain individuals have expressed a fear that the city could easily decide to defund the police or the fire if the departments are not in the charter. While I believe that the likelihood of that is very remote, I also think that concern is understandable. However, I want to provide you with some research that I did on other homeroom charter cities and whether or not they require police and fire departments in their charters. I kind of randomly looked at the charters of 14 cities in Missouri. I didn't include Kansas City because of the unique state control of its police department. So, I looked at Lee's Summit, Springfield, Columbia, Blue Springs, St. Louis, St. Joseph, Joplin, Jefferson City, Cape Girardeau, Clayton, Florissant, Fulton, Kirkwood, and St. Charles. And of those, the following cities do not include fire or police departments in their charters. Lee's Summit, Columbia, Blue Springs, Cape Girardeau, Kirkwood, and St. Charles. Jefferson City doesn't specifically require a police department, but it does have language that references it by requiring a police department merit system. Its charter doesn't address a fire department, and they do have a fire department. Some of the cities that do require police and fire departments in their charter also include language that the departments may be combined. And importantly, the model charter which our commission used repeatedly and relied on does not include any city departments in its language. So, what I want to point out is that not having the police and fire departments as required departments in their charters, in these other cities' charters, does not and has not, as far as I know, led to defunding or contracting out for those services. All of the cities that I mentioned have police departments, and all but Blue Springs have fire departments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tony Summer, and Tony, you've got five minutes.
Hello, my name is Tony Summer, 220 West Mill Street. With our new city council members having their first meeting tonight, I wanted to bring up an issue that has long been overlooked and about which we will be making very important decisions in the near future, which is the bus system. This is an issue that doesn't get the attention it deserves, because our decision-makers never take the bus, but it is a critical part of our city services. To get right to the point, the problem our bus system has is a lack of funding that makes it impossible for it to meet people's basic transportation needs. There are ideas going around on how to improve it, but the simple reality is that the system as it is today is as good as it will ever be with the funding it has available. For example, there is a push to move to more on-demand services. While well-intentioned, that would make the situation even worse. To understand this, let's think about it in terms of what our ridership levels should be if we had a transit system that was good enough for people to rely on. Over 6% of households in Independence don't have a car. That's roughly 7,000 people in Independence who we would expect to rely on the transit system. I would argue that an average person makes at least five trips per week. That is less than one per day, and I think everybody agrees that that's an unrealistically low estimate. Most people leave their house more than once a day. And one trip using public transit represents two bus rides, one going there and one coming back. Using these numbers, which are very conservative, we would expect 3.6 million rides per year on our transit system, given our demographics. Anything less than that is an indication that our bus service isn't reliable enough to meet people's basic needs. If our ridership is below that 3.6 million number, then that means there are people who do not have a car, who are not making those five trips per week. So, if the bare minimum is 3.6 million, how far do we fall short? Are we at 3 million, 2 million, 1 million? No. According to the latest numbers I could find, our ridership is less than 200,000, not even 10% of the 3.6 million bare minimum. That 3.5 million ride gap isn't just a number on a page. It represents real tangible harm to our community. That's 3.5 million times a person couldn't get to work. 3.5 million times somebody in poverty had to pay for an expensive Uber or ask somebody else to drive them. That's 3.5 million times somebody simply didn't leave home, because they were physically unable to get where they needed to go. And yes, this is the best our system can do with its current funding. If we move towards an on-demand system, it will make these numbers even worse. As underfunded as our system is, we still average around 12.5 riders per bus hour. On the other hand, on-demand services max out at around four riders per bus hour, less than a third of what we currently provide. A shift away from traditional buses would mean even more trips that people would be unable to make. On-demand services have their place, but they should supplement regular bus service rather than be the only option. The problem we are trying to solve here is not one of form, it is one of funding. It is simply not possible to provide adequate service for a city of our size with just $3 million a year. We need to decide if we're going to take transit seriously. If we don't take it seriously, it means that we're going to require anybody who wants to live in Independence to own and drive a car. And if you can't afford to drive a car, or you physically can't drive a car, then we don't think you're welcome here. That's unacceptable. I want to live in a city where you don't have to own a car to be a full citizen. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, is it Roberts?
Yes, sir.
Matt, please come forward, and you have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Matt Roberts. I do live in Blue Springs. I have a business here in Independence, and that's why I'm here to speak to you tonight. Mr. Mayor, council members, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I own rental property in Independence, and what I'd like to talk about is an ordinance that will have its first reading tonight, 24-033, which involves replacing the first part of Section 5 of the City Code about business licenses. As a property owner, I have a rental business license in the city of Independence. I've had it for several years. There's some language in the new proposed ordinance that I'm not sure specifically applies to me, but I'm also not sure it doesn't apply to me. And that language says that, "In order for customers to obtain utility service to an office, commercial, or industrial establishment, a valid business license shall be issued by the city to that property address." And I looked a little bit at the history of that, and the Section 5 has been amended several times lately, in the past year or so. And that specific language came from a requirement for occupational licenses that was passed last summer. And the reason why that language sort of stood out to me is there was a proposal which didn't pass earlier this year to specifically for rental business licenses, require the landlord to have a business license before the tenants could get the city utilities turned on. And I came and spoke to the council about that in January. And my main concern at that time, which I won't go into all the details of, was just the way the license renewal process works. Sometimes it didn't always work smoothly, and so I felt that adding additional requirements for that to be working smoothly, you know, to that process was maybe not a good idea. Again, I'm not sure that this proposed language would exactly apply to me. I'm sure I could get my lawyer to argue that a single-family house is not an industrial establishment. I could probably win the argument that it's not an office, but there is, it says it's a commercial establishment. It's like, well, you know, I'm sure when somebody drafted that, they were thinking of like a store, you know, or some, an office building. But, you know, you could argue that owning or renting out of rental property is a form of commerce. And so, what I would like to see changed about that proposed language, I know that Chapter 5, the first part of Chapter 5, is the general regulations for all the business licenses in the city. And then, other types of businesses, some of them have other sections of the City Code that pertain to regulations for those specific businesses. Some of them are in Chapter 5, some of them, the rental stuff, is in another chapter. And so, what I'd like to suggest is that if you do want to have the idea of the utility service tied to the business license, put that in the specific section of the code for the types of businesses that you want that to apply to. If you don't want to do that, then, you know, spell out in Chapter 5, in this proposed language, what types of businesses that should apply to, or if it's all businesses, or what you would like it to have. If you can't do that, if you're going to pass this, you know, as it is, then what I would like to say is that when you do, the next time you do visit those other parts of the City Code that set out regulations for specific kinds of businesses, then, you know, make a statement as to, you know, does all of this first section of Chapter 5 apply, or are there requirements in there that don't apply to that specific type of business? I know that the rental licensing language, the first thing it says is, "You must, you know, you must have a business license according to Section 5." So, whatever requirements are in this would flow down to the rental license. And I assume probably some other types of licenses have similar language, that this would flow down into them. So, that's my concern about, you know, adding a requirement to the business licensing process that hasn't worked well for me sometimes, and then making that be a requirement for all types of businesses, possibly because of this language in the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us to our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'll move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion in a second to approve the items of the city manager. Are there any items that would like to be pulled from the consent agenda? Please proceed.
24-724.
Okay. Councilmember Fears would like to pull 24-724. Any other items, please? Okay, we'll pull that one out. Let's go ahead and approve all of them, then we'll come back to yours if we can, Mr. Fears. So, we've got a motion in a second. Can we go ahead and take the roll on the consent agenda, minus 24-724?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the consent agenda is approved, seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 24-724. Councilmember Fears, please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, this resolution would establish a temporary moratorium for six months on these types of businesses. I'd like to make a motion to amend that to three months.
Okay.
I'll second.
We've got a motion to amend it from six months to three months. It has been, there's been a motion in a second. Any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, do you think that timeframe will work for you and your staff?
I do. We originally proposed six months just to ensure, you know, that we had plenty of time. But in visiting with the Community Development Director, we anticipate that it'll be far less than six months. So, I think that timeline works well, gives us plenty of time to make the thoughtful changes that we are anticipating, bring it to the Planning Commission, and then have their recommendation for council consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? And, Mr. City Manager, just for everyone here, this is just a moratorium on a very, very small slice of businesses. We are, for all intents and purposes, still open. It's just basically small convenience stores, things like that.
Right. And if there were some extenuating circumstance of a specific instance where we felt it was in the city's best interest- Please proceed.
I'll move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion in a second to approve the items of the city manager. Are there any items that would like to be pulled from the consent agenda? Please proceed.
24-724.
Okay. Councilmember Fears would like to pull 24-724. Any other items, please? We'll pull that one out. Let's go ahead and approve all of them, then we'll come back to yours if we can, Mr. Fears. So we've got a motion in a second. Can we go ahead and take the roll on the consent agenda, minus 24-724?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the consent agenda is approved, seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 24-724. Councilmember Fears, please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, this resolution would establish a temporary moratorium for six months on these types of businesses. I'd like to make a motion to amend that to three months.
Okay.
I'll second.
We've got a motion to amend it from six months to three months. It has been, there's been a motion in a second. Any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, do you think that timeframe will work for you and your staff?
I do. We originally proposed six months just to ensure, you know, that we had plenty of time. But in visiting with the Community Development Director, we anticipate that it'll be far less than six months. So I think that timeline works well, gives us plenty of time to make the thoughtful changes that we are anticipating, bring it to the Planning Commission, and then have their recommendation for council consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? And, Mr. City Manager, just for everyone here, this is just a moratorium on a very, very small slice of businesses. We are, for all intents and purposes, still open. It's just basically small convenience stores, things like that.
Right. And if there were some extenuating circumstance of a specific instance where we felt it was in the city's best interest to consider an application for some reason, then we could make that recommendation to the council to lift that moratorium, to allow for that consideration. But the true purpose of this is to hit the pause button very quickly, as you say, Mayor, on a very limited section of businesses, to allow for some modifications that we think will help give the city better governance as we look to develop and lay out our community.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, and we're just talking about the amendment right now, so Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the three-month amendment on 24-724.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the amendment on 24-724 of three months is in fact approved. This brings us back to the main bill. Any further discussion on 24-724? Seeing no further discussion on 24-724. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24-724 passes, seven in favor, zero against. That brings us to our first public hearing. I'll open this up. Mr. Scannell, the, and if we can just have the announcement on the public hearing, and then we'll get to you, Mr. Scannell.
A public hearing for the formation of the Fairmount Community Improvement District, full public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Tom Scannell. I'm the Community Development Director. The city has received a Community Improvement District petition for the Fairmount area. So this generally encompasses the properties along the south side of 24 Highway, with Huttig on the west and River on the east. The petition that we received was signed by more than 50% of the property owners within the district, who represent more than 50% of the property valuation within the district. The CID would propose a 1% sales tax within the district, which would be used for capital improvements such as streetscape, lighting, public benches, among other things, as well as for public services, such as special events and security services. The CID would be open for 27 years, which is the maximum allowed by state statute. The petitioners are seeking a blight finding. A blight study is included in the petition, and this blight study found unsanitary and unsafe conditions, as well as deterioration of site conditions. That concludes staff's presentations. We have representatives from the CID, as well as Gilmore Bell, who represents the city as their bond counsel.
Any further questions on that from councilmembers? And this is a full public hearing, so is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Doug Cowan. I reside at 807 South Main. I represent Community Services League, where I serve as the president and CEO. For the purpose of this hearing, we own the property located in the proposed district at 10725 East US 24 Highway, known to most of you as Blendwell Community Cafe. And so that I am clear, my intention is to speak in favor of the proposed petition in front of you tonight. At the building that I reference, we own and operate Blendwell Community Cafe. And also in that building, in the basement, we operate what we call CSL's Work-Life Center, where we provide career services training to the community. We have additional staff in the building that work in our community development team. Ten years ago, CSL looked at making a major and larger investment in Northwest Independence. And as part of that process, we met with neighbors to see what we could do together. No one in our meetings, knowing who CSL was, asked us to open a food pantry or a thrift store. People said, could we collaborate and build something nice, a nice place to gather? Neighbors were discouraged that nicer developments had bypassed Fairmount over the years. But it is understandable, if you're a developer, to understand why. Lower household incomes, over the years, good-paying jobs had vacated the area, and other factors pulled strong businesses away from the Fairmount neighborhood. So with the support of donors and state tax credits, we invested more than $1 million into Blendwell to create a vibrant gathering space and to be a spark for economic development in the Fairmount neighborhood. Over the last six years since we've opened, we've hosted hundreds of cultural and civic gatherings, and we've worked to support local businesses, especially those owned by people of color, women, and immigrants. It's been inspiring to see new businesses open along 24 Highway in Fairmount. Yet, much work remains. Buildings along 24 Highway, including commercial and residential, have been demolished due to fire and other disrepair. Other buildings remain vacant and/or in need of significant renovation. A CID, to be clear, won't be the sole revitalization tool for Fairmount, but it will be extremely helpful. The CID, should you accept our petition, which includes our case for acknowledging significant blight in the area, could help with signage or facade grants for business owners, if the CID board chooses to do so. We hope that the CID helps to unlock significant private capital and investment to help the area reach its potential. Independence, all of us, we have long struggled with the lack of investment along the corridor that leads from Kansas City to the Harry S. Truman Library and Museum. With MoDOT's massive current investment in new road and sidewalk infrastructure, the CID compared nicely to improve the area with landscaping, cleaning, security, and business retention and attraction services, among other things allowed by state law. There are some encouraging data points to consider. According to census.gov, in 2014, when we started the process of buying our building, the median household income in the 64053 ZIP code was $31,000. As of 2022, the latest report from the census, it was $42,000. According to Zillow, in December 2015, the last, the earliest date I could find, the home value and, the average home value in 64053 was $33,000. As of last month, it was $117,000. In 2014, also according to the census, only 77.6% of residents in the 64053 ZIP code had a high school diploma, bachelor's degree, or higher level of educational attainment. In 2022, that number had reached 87.5%, which doesn't necessarily tell a complete story of a neighborhood, but it suggests higher rates of economic opportunity. Our area is strengthening economically, and a Community Improvement District can help build a brighter future. For two years, we have worked up and down 24 Highway to gather the petitions to bring this CID to life that will span from Huttig to River. This is a huge opportunity for Independence, and we implore you to move this Community Improvement District petition forward.
Thank you. Anyone else speak in favor of or in opposition to this application?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Karen Bauer, and I'm here to talk about the CID and be in favor of that. My husband and I own a little barbecue joint at 1101 West US 24 Highway. We've been in business now for 11 years and currently have a staff of 28 full and part-time employees. Over the years, we've expanded our business to include an outside covered deck and an additional parking lot. Our area desperately needs maintenance that has been deferred for years and improvements that have been discussed for years. A CID can address these issues, such as beautification, lighting, community safety, to further help attract growth to our area. We appreciate you considering the CID.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Cyril Raybeck. I'm a local attorney here in Independence. I'm also a business owner in Fairmount. I grew up in and around the Fairmount area, and although I am a resident of Sugar Creek, I spend a majority of my investments in Independence. Even though I grew up in the area, I really began my ownership interest in Fairmount about 12 years ago, when I purchased a dilapidated and rundown car wash that was nothing more than a flop house for transient vandals. And a testament to that was, I don't think there was one tiny piece of metal left in that entire structure, because they had gotten their hands on anything they could. When I purchased that, it took me about two years, but I spent a lot of money renovating that, making it attractive, making it clean, and making it safe. But I kept hearing from people, other business owners, friends, family, why would you want to own a business in Fairmount? And they had a really good point. I got tired of driving by that car wash. For quite a few years, it just sat there and just caused and attracted problems. Kind of really got on my nerves that there wasn't any other investment going on. So I bought it and fixed it up. That's at 10601 US 24 Highway. Next, about six years ago, I made another crazy decision and purchased a dilapidated vacant building that had sat vacant for over a decade, and decided to renovate that and put my law office there, right in the heart of Fairmount, next to the old Palominos. That's at 10203 24 Highway. And last but not least, a couple years ago, I purchased the old Fairmount liquor building, which is next to the car wash, that had been closed for some time due to significant flooding that thankfully has, I hope, permanently been resolved. The common theme, like I said earlier about the car wash, but the common theme I kept getting from people finding out that I was making these investments in the area is why? Why would you spend money in an area that nobody else is investing in, the city doesn't seem to care about? And why would you put a professional law firm in an area that's nothing more but boarded-up windows and lots of homeless people coming through, a lot of buildings that have been, had to be demolished because they've been either torn into, forgotten about, or like Doug said, burned up and forgotten about? Essentially, you know, I wanted to come here tonight to let you guys know that you do have a unique opportunity. Through the very hard work of Doug, CSL, Mr. Moore, they have done just so much, and also Mr. Perkins as well has been very helpful to our district there. You guys have a unique opportunity here to pass this petition, to grant the CID. And by doing that, you're not going to fix everything overnight. But with the major infrastructure investment that's being made by the Missouri Department of Transportation along 24 Highway, coupled with this CID, this is really going to allow our community to do something. And it's not going to happen overnight. It's going to take time. But at least, with these things in place, we can go to other investors that don't have to be as crazy as I am, and they can see that the city is willing to make investments in that area, so they also will be willing to make investments in that area. So, again, I've come here tonight to ask you guys to highly consider passing this petition. I think if you take a look at what the CID, Community Improvement District, has done for places like Inglewood, for places like the Nolan Road District, it is very, very amazing. I know my brother, Yoshiko Raybeck, who is a former defense police officer, sent you guys an email today, also stressing his desire to have this passed. And I want to just, one last thing before I end my speech here, is that he makes a really good point, because he was on the streets during the time that Inglewood made that improvement. That was his district. So he's working nights in Inglewood, he's working nights in Fairmount. And he sees firsthand what that CID did for Inglewood, and just how much it cleaned up the area, got rid of the petty vandalism, the vagrants moving through there, and just changed so much. And I think if we had something even remotely as good as that in Fairmount, it will no longer be the forgotten district of Independence. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor of or opposition to?
Good evening, council, Mayor. I'm Patrick Ferro. I am the executive director and CEO at the Fairmount Community Center. We are actually in Independence, and we've done everything we can to continue to build our community. We help kids with clothes in partnership with the Independent School District. We feed the homebound citizens in our area through the Meals on Wheels program. We provide events, fun trips, educational programs, and otherwise be a real magnet to improve our community. We are now reviving the home repair program in our area that has lasted for about five years because of the lack of federal funds, and we're doing that with local raised resources. So, why a CID? This will improve our overall area of the city for where we sit, where we live, and the citizens that live right there. In cooperation with Sugar Creek, we are forming a complimentary CID on the other side of the street. So not only is the Independence CID, the effort at the Fairmount Community Center is to establish the same kind of CID on the other side of the street for Sugar Creek. This has also led to the development of the Sugar Creek Chamber of Commerce, which has our official formal meeting this week in terms of establishing. So, why a CID? A strong business area makes a stronger community, and our community needs the help. We need your support for the CID in Independence. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor of or opposition to?
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Jennifer Manulelewa, and I do work for Community Services League, but I'm pretty sure my peer, Doug, covered that one. So I'm going to speak as a citizen who lives in the community directly affected. I began working in Northwest Independence in 2008, and I moved in in 2011, when I started my family. And we live right there, right there. We've seen it, we've seen it all. And to be quite frank, I've done probably 1,000 minimally one-to-one conversations with men, women, and humans who have lived there and worked there in that community between Fairmount, Sugar Creek, Mallinson, and Van Horn, and all, everywhere else, the seniors, all the way down to the children. And I will tell you a few things that they love about that neighborhood. They love affordable housing. Now, can we grow in that area? Yeah, but that's a different conversation, right? But they also love the fact that it has become highly immigrant, that it is a very diverse community. It is one of the areas where our black and brown neighbors know they are safe, welcome, and cared for in that community. So then, when you go a little further and you ask them what they want for that area, specifically 24 Highway, I got the opportunity to be part of the Fairmount study a few years ago, and going into it, I knew what my community said. They had four things they wanted us to really make happen. One was, they knew predatory lending was bad, but they had no choices, right? The city made efforts on that by changing some of the predatory lending laws a few years back, right? They knew they needed better jobs. They had jobs, they needed better jobs. The city has already partnered with organizations such as CSL and others to provide workforce training and the appropriate supports to help that. The third is a quality multicultural grocery store. We're working on it, but Save-A-Lot, in their defense, has come a long way. And fourth is a viable economic district. And we know that Fairmount has some good, solid businesses. CSL's one of them, Los Amigos is one of them, but we need some more, right? And this would just be part of it. We lost our CVS, but we don't want to lose any more. This is part of what our community has said they want. They want where their kids could walk up to the district and get what they need, have the services they need. And so I know that they would be in favor of this, as well as I am and my family. And so I'm asking you to vote in favor of a Community Improvement District, for all the reasons mentioned and all the reasons the studies show are important, and support the men, women, and humans who do live there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak in favor of or opposition to? Anybody else speak in favor of or opposition to? Anyone else speak in favor of or opposition to? Okay, this will close the public hearing on this. Is there any discussion from the councilmembers? Any further discussion on the CID?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I won't belabor the point or take away from the passion of those folks who came up and spoke, so thank you very much for coming to the full public hearing. This is the first reading. We'll vote on it in two weeks, after this Monday. Long time coming, a long time coming being, when we started having the open dialogues with Community Development, with our Municipal Service, Public Works at the time, 2018, working with State Cost Share between this. So five years later, we've begun to break ground. Several years later, we're forming a CID to help carry the torch a little further and bring that surrounding support. And as you can tell, the passion and the commitment with the men and women that spoke here today helps me- here today helps me, helps my job, help Independence move the ball forward. So I'll save more remarks for later, but it's exciting to see Northwest Independence really getting a leg up and moving forward. It takes a little bit of patience and time, but we are getting there.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else have a further discussion? Okay. With that, I will now, will I close the public hearing? So that will take us to our ordinances, and that will take us to 24015. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24015, second reading, an ordinance vacating an existing right-of-way of all that part of Coon Road, beginning at 7 Highway and heading west approximately 631 feet, and reserving the same as a general utility easement, Independence, Jackson County, Missouri, second reading.
Okay, any discussion on 24015, vacating Coon Road?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. Powers, he had came a couple of times, he's the other property owner that connects with Coon Road, and he had stated that he had had an objection to this. I spoke with him last Wednesday, and he just wanted to, he let me know that he's dropping any objection to this vacation, and he wanted me to let the City Council know that as well. I believe he also spoke with Councilmember Perkins, but I just want to let everybody know that.
Okay. So what you're saying is, there's no known opposition to this at this point? Okay? Anyone else have a further discussion on 24015, vacating Coon Road? Okay, with that being said, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24015 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 24030. And Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-030, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a contract with Jackson County, Missouri, which calls for Jackson County to provide funding in the amount of $225,000 to the City of Independence Police Department's law enforcement school-based initiative called STEP, second reading.
Any discussion on this item? Any further discussion on 24030? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 24030 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to first readings. And I will, I'm going to ask a question on 24033 when we get there, so just want to give you a heads up.
24-031, first reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 9 Fire Code of the Independent City Code by adding a new Article 2 to add lift-assist cost recovery and non-resident mitigation fees, first reading. 24-032, first reading, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the City Code pertaining to data center use in I-1. This addresses Item 2.1.C of the 2324 Independence Action Plan, first reading. 24-033, first reading, an ordinance repealing Chapter 5, Article 1, adding a new Chapter 5, Article 1 in the City Code, and renaming Chapter 5 to Business Licenses. This addresses Item 2.1.A of the 2324 Independence Action Plan, first reading.
And if I could, Mr. City Counselor, given the objections we've had from Mr. Roberts tonight, can we have a discussion about that item and kind of get that lined out so we're all on the same page?
Yes.
So, thank goodness, wanted to let Mr. Roberts know, we're going to kind of look at it and see where we can go from there, so thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
24-034, first reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning district, a rezoning from District C to General Commercial and District R-12 to Family Residential to District R-6, Single Family Residential, for the property at 9519 East Truman Road, first reading. 24-035, first reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R-30/PUD, High Density Residential, to R-6, Single Family Residential, for the property at 120 East College Street, first reading. 24-036, first reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C to General Commercial to District R-6, Single Family Residential, for the property at 908 North Liberty Street, first reading. 24-037, first reading, an ordinance approving the petition to establish the Fairmount Community Improvement District, establishing the district, and making findings and authorization actions related to establishment of the district, first reading.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Stewart, the floor is yours.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perkins, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted a notification of a town hall discussion that will be at Inglewood Arts for a town hall meeting on the proposed charter change on Wednesday, May 15th, at 6:30 PM. Two members of the Charter Commission will be there to answer questions. The Inglewood Arts is at 10901 East Winter Road. Plan to attend if you have any questions on those proposed changes.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Fears?
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of items. I know it's been three weeks since we've met here, but we have been busy doing other things. Audit and Finance Committee did meet, and we heard a presentation by our City Management Analyst on the Arch Program and a review of that, which was very good. And also had a gripping budget presentation relative to priority-based budgeting, so we're anxious to see more about that in our upcoming budget talks. And the other item I would just mention is that the Independence Economic Development Partnership Meeting, we saw a video, I would just encourage those that might be interested to go and take a look on the Chamber website, and a great video about things that are happening in Independence and the construction and the variety of different things going on from that standpoint. That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vought?
I just want to express my sincere gratitude and thanks to my fellow council members, the mayor, the city manager, the city staff, the warm welcome that I've gotten, and the support and encouragement during the last few weeks. Everybody's been just very helpful, and I just really appreciate that, and that's all.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Wiley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to mention that this Thursday, I graduate from the Citizens Police Academy, and I would encourage anyone who's interested at all in what our police department does, that they have a program called the Citizens Police Academy. They have a spring class and a fall class, it's a 10-week program. The staff has spent a lot of time with us and shown us the specialized units, and last Thursday, I got to see the dispatch building and the dispatchers and was very impressed with them. So if you're interested, I would encourage anyone to join the police academy. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilman McCandless, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of shout-outs. Ms. Alversia Pettigrew, who is a citizen at Independence, was awarded the D'Vern Lee Callaway Woman of the Year Award down in Jefferson City. If you know Alversia, she has been one of the great leaders of the African-American community in Independence, and we're just delighted to be able to celebrate with her. Cargo Largo was recognized with the Kansas City Capstone Award by the Business Journal, and so as one of our, an area that we've seen development in, it's great to see recognition in the broader Kansas City area. And then, a High School Principal of the Year was awarded to Justin Woods, Van Horn High School. Love to give a shout-out to our local schools. And then the last special thank you goes to the Missouri Legislature, who recognized the parents of Officer Cody Allen on the floor, and they had a receiving line with their appreciation for him giving the ultimate sacrifice in his duty to the City of Independence. So just appreciative that they carried forward with that. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I've got quite a few things, because as mayor, I get invited to a whole bunch of events, and I just wanted to kind of share some of them. There's a Toastmasters Tower Talkers Group right here, they meet at the North Library, it was their 50th anniversary, they had a great meeting. The AME Church, right at the corner here, trying to think of which way it would be, it would be this corner, wouldn't it? So they had their regional meeting there, they invited me, I got to tell you, you should go sometime. You talk about, they do church, okay? I mean, all I could say was, wow. It was fantastic. If you've ever seen, I've, Are You Ready for a Miracle by, what is it, Patti LaBelle? They were very close to that. It was remarkable, the job that they did. Also, the CSL Appreciation Luncheon, they did a great job there. Wild About Harry Institute, I know a number of council members went to that. Job One, did their casino night for fundraiser for their Job One folks, and they just did a great job there. And then, also, last but not least, Councilmember, I didn't want to steal your thunder for the Truman statue that was put on the square. I will give you the floor back if you would like to do that.
It was a joy to do the unveiling for the latest Truman statue, right in front of Clinton's Soda Fountain. Byron Constance, one of our local lawyers at age 97, is still going strong and has actually tentatively committed to another statue. But if you get a chance, it's not going to be put in there permanently until the streetscape is completed, but I hope you'll come by and see it sometime. It is the young Truman in his job as a soda jerk and working at the Clinton Soda Fountain, and he's pushing a broom, and it's really designed for little kids. So the statue is looking down, and really only peewees are going to be looking up at his face, so if you want the full benefit of seeing it, you need to bend over, get on your hands and knees, something to look up into the face of the young Truman. Thank you.
So thank you. And that was just a great event, and it's just a great way that we have our, celebrating our history here on the square. And with that, I wanted you to give me a, kind of a lead-in to the video contest that we have going on through July 4th. Lynn's over there laughing because she's heard me talk about this so much, and I'm certainly going to wear it out, Lynn. And so, but there were actually two videographers there doing a story on exactly the statue, the unveiling, and they also, both of them interviewed Byron, and they want to put together a video on that. So I think that's just great to celebrate that. And so with that, the Inglewood Arts glassblowers have actually done a model of the award that you will win, so you can win up to $2,000 per award right there, and then you can also walk away with this trophy. So this is just a mock-up, they're going to do, it's going to be a little bit bigger, but they've just done a really cool job there, and I just want to do a shout-out to those folks. So please forgive me for filibustering this meeting. With that, before we come to you, Mr. City Manager, I'm going to turn it over to Suzanne just for, our City Clerk, just for a second, for an announcement, then we'll go to you, if we may.
A recommendation has been made to reappoint Mindy Meadows, Helen Hurley, Virginia Hedson, and Nina Woodson Foss to the Human Relations Commission. Staff request direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting, reappointing these individuals to the above board. And a recommendation has been made by Councilmember Perkins to reappoint Jose, I'm sorry, to appoint Jose Torres to the Planning Commission. Staff request direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting, appointing this individual to that board.
Thank you. And Mr. City Manager, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a couple of announcements from me this evening. We're always excited as an organization when members of our city team are able to serve on regional or state or even national committees, because it brings a lot of positive attention both to Independence and then the benefit our members receive from serving in those. So I would really like to congratulate Councilmember McCandless for recently being appointed as the Secretary for the Mid-America Regional Council Board of Directors, and Councilmember Fears for being appointed to the vacant spot on that Board of Directors as well, so Independence being well represented there. And then this past week, our own Police Chief, Adam Dustman, was elected as the third Vice President for the Missouri Police Chiefs Association. So you think of all the chiefs across the state, being elected by his peers into that capacity, very prestigious for both him and for Independence as a whole. So thank you to all those folks who are stepping up to serve outside of normal duties. Speaking of police, just want to make sure everybody recalls, between now and our next regular meeting, the Police Memorial Ceremony is next Thursday, May 16th, 7:30 PM, in front of the Police Headquarters. Always a very moving event, but particularly so this year with the loss of Officer Cody Allen recently. And then I know it sounds very police-heavy tonight, but there is an issue that I want to make sure gets on your radar as elected officials, and certainly for the constituents that you serve. We have recently become aware that the City of Kansas City, Missouri, has enacted a new wage scale for the members of their police department. And of course, Kansas City is a different beast, being that it's governed by the State of Missouri and not the local council. However, starting wages for officers in Kansas City, Missouri, has been raised to $65,000. That compares to Independence, which is about $53,000. So over the course of a police officer's career, or not a career, but over a 20-year period, somebody working for Kansas City, Missouri, as a police officer would make about $575,000 more than an Independence police officer. That is compounded by the fact that Kansas City, two years ago, lifted their residency requirement for their police officers, so that you only have to live within a 30-mile radius of downtown Kansas City. And if that doesn't sound all that much, that 30-mile radius extends almost as far north as Excelsior Springs, almost as far up as Atchison area, and then of course, down into the Lone Jack area as well, and east out towards Odessa. So that is a very big territory, that a lot of our officers live within that bubble. We are having great conversations, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but great conversations with our Fraternal Order of Police about how we address that, because this is an inflection point for our city. We are already at 38 vacancies. We have a very young department, where those kind of wages are going to be very attractive to somebody who's just starting out in their career and looking to raise a family and take care of a family. So it's very critical, both that we figure out what we're going to do with our wage scale, but as I have said many times in many forums, the city does have a revenue issue. We've worked really hard to bring our expenditures more in line with other municipalities. I'm not saying we perfectly solve that, but revenue growth remains a challenge for us. So these are conversations that I think are extremely critical to have, and not over an elongated time, but pretty quickly here, because now that this wage table has dropped, I can assure you that our personnel are aware of that. It is certainly the talk of the Police Chiefs Association, that Chief Dustman was just at, I was just at the Missouri City Managers Conference, and it's a conversation piece there. I think it's going to be very important that we take action to ensure that we don't see a rush of officers heading to Kansas City, which would certainly be understandable without some sort of change here. So I don't mean to be doomsday, but I think it's part of my role to make you aware of issues like this, and encourage you that we have some conversations expeditiously to get out in front of this.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Anything else before we wrap up?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, this has been a heavy topic, topic that's been in the news, also a topic that we've been discussing as city council members as a body. Next Monday for study session, do we need to, Mr. Cover, do we need to suspend the rules and procedures to place that on for a topic for a study session for next Monday? And if we were wanting to take any type of action, do we need to suspend the rules and procedures for adding a special meeting?
You, if you'd like to add that as a topic to the study session, you could certainly, you know, indicate that now, and we will do that. As far as any sort of special meeting, we are looking at that, and technically, you know, the mayor can call that, you know, on his own, but yes, that is a possibility that we'll, that we're going to look at, given the timeline for everything.
Okay. Well, thank you. I would encourage you to add that for discussion, because, not to get into a lot of details, but the City Council has taken this topic quite seriously. We have met three times since last Wednesday under the guise and ordinance and... We have met three times since last Wednesday under the guise and ordinance and allowable uses to go into executive sessions to discuss this matter, because it's that urgent. We met Sunday. It is, it's very urgent that we get the information more digestive to us and also to the public of what we're.
Yeah. So, if you wanted to just to go ahead and and vote to add it, you don't have to, I mean, just voting is you all suspending your rules. So, if you wanted to vote to add it as an item to the study session, then that would be helpful.
Yep. Would you make a motion, please?
I'll make that motion to add that to our study session.
Do we have a second? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this to add it to our study session for next Monday? Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And we're adding the item discussing the challenges of this City of Kansas City raising its pay scale for all the police officers. We're discussing that on next Monday. So, we're ready to go with that. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
As, I'm going to address this to Mr. Walker. As Mr. Walker was talking about the great things that people are doing, I think he neglected something about himself. Didn't you miss something? And weren't you just elected to?
Well, it was intentional, but thank you, Councilmember Fears. That was nice. I appreciate that.
Would you share that with the community, please?
Okay. I I was very flattered and humbled to be elected as the Vice President of the Missouri City Managers Association by by my peers this past week as well, which will then put me in line to serve as President of that organization next year, a year from now as well. So, thank you for recognizing that and the opportunity to highlight that.
Thank you. Thank you, and thanks for that. That was well done. Anyone else? Just make sure we don't miss anything else before we go on. All right. With that, we will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.